I'm Michael Popa, Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition. And thank you for joining the second of five Johnson County primary candidate forums, co-presented by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce, and Mainstream Coalition. Tonight, we'll hear from three of the nine candidates running for Olathe City Council. However, please note that all candidates on the August ballot for this race were invited to participate. Before we begin, I'll go over a few housekeeping items. If you, we are offering closed caption through a third-party service this evening. If you don't see those closed captions, please click the CC button at the bottom of your screen. If time permits this evening, we'll be taking questions from the audience. For that, to submit a question, please use the Q&amp;A feature also at the bottom of your screen. If you are using a mobile device, you may need to tap the more icon to find those features. A link to the forum guidelines will be placed in the chat, but I'll hit a few highlights here. Each question will be asked to all candidates. All candidates will have two minutes to answer each of those questions. And then, time permitting, each candidate will have one minute at the end for closing remarks. The remaining time for each candidate and each question will be placed in the chat. Should a candidate go over the time allotted, our moderator will politely say thank you and move on to the next question. The partner organizations cosponsoring this forum believe that democracy works best when citizens are informed and active. Thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates currently running for office and the important issues surrounding these races. And now, I'd like to welcome our moderator this evening, Janet Milkovich with the League of Women Voters of Johnson County.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to moderate tonight's event. And please let me introduce the candidates participating. I'd like to introduce David Lauder.
Hello?
Welcome, David. Thank you so much for being here. And Dean Vakis. Welcome, Dean. Glad to have you here. And last but not least, Ben Nagiris.
Good evening.
And Ben, did I say it right this time? Nagiris.
Perfect.
Okay. I've got these hyphenated spellings all over my page. So, the sponsors of tonight's forum strongly believe that those who represent us in local government have a direct and important impact on our daily lives. To set the stage, I'd like to briefly highlight key responsibilities of the Olathe City Council. So, the city council establishes city policy, making general policy decisions and overseeing the city manager. The city council serves as a legislative body to pass ordinances, approves the budget, both the annual operating budget and the budget for the five-year capital improvement plan, and provides leadership to ensure the efficient operation of city services and expenditures of public funds. So, our questions tonight will be directed to those areas of responsibility. We will create a rotating order for candidates to answer questions. I hope that's what we do. I hope I don't mess this up. So, if I do, give me grace, please. And we will start in alphabetical order. So, our question number one concerns funding and has two parts. And David, you'll be the first to answer these questions. Do you have reservations about any of the capital improvements proposed for the five-year period of 2022 through 2026? And do you think Olathe's parks and trails are adequately funded for the next five years?
So, two questions. I don't have any serious reservations about any of the budget items I've seen. I want to be straightforward. I'm not sure I'm totally aware of all of the budget and the budget items. So, I'm a little bit behind on that. So, I apologize. The second question, can you repeat the second question?
Sure. Do you think Olathe's parks and trails are adequately funded for the next five years?
I think Olathe has done a very good job of making parks available to all of its citizens across Olathe. Happy to see what's been done so far. I do think what I have witnessed and seen and learned is that the funding is good for what I would expect it to be. So, I think they've done, well, they've done a good job with how decisions have been made so far and the funds that have been allocated to that topic. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And Ben, how about you? Do you need me to repeat the question?
Sure, please repeat.
Do you have reservations about any of the capital improvements proposed for the five-year period from 2022 through 2026? And do you think Olathe's parks and trails are adequately funded for the next five years?
You know, I'll be very direct and honest as well as David mentioned. I'm not 100% familiar with the funding that's allocated for the next few years. But I can tell you that I do believe that Olathe has done a great job in building an active community and being fiscally responsible with any projects that are implemented into our city. You know, one of my goals, if elected, to an opportunity as city councilman is to provide a robust and active community, which includes parks and recreation. You know, my kids and I were very active outdoors. We're very involved in a lot of Olathe activities, outdoor activities, obviously. And we really enjoy everything that Olathe has done for our parks and community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Dean, would you like me to repeat the question for you?
No, I'm going to try and remember. So, you know, a couple of points, the CIP, the five-year CIP. So, you know, it's five years, but there are multiple out-years. So, the theory is every year, a year rolls off and you add something from the out-years that was not previously funded. So, as I look at this year's proposed five-year CIP, you know, they're all great projects. They have been prioritized by the city staff based on a variety of legitimate, scientific, and well-thought-out methods. But nonetheless, there's an element of politics that comes into play when the city council makes final determination of what stays in the five-year plan and what comes out. I'm not prepared to highlight anything that's wrong, but I think that it bears continual scrutiny to make sure that we choose the right projects and always move them forward as rapidly as we can. You know, the city carries in any given year $350 million of finance costs related to the CIP. So, it's a big business, quite frankly. A lot of it's transportation, but there's a new police station, there's a new library, it all comes into play. Now, specific to parks and rec, parks and trails, you know, I don't think it's adequate. It is good, and there's a lot of money being spent on our park system. And you know, we have an eighth-cent sales tax to supplement the funding that the city council gives out of the general budget. We would love to see more. Our trail system is not as mature as it should be. We have some great big parks, but we don't have enough pocket parks. The issue is where do you find the money? And so, I think we really do need to have a renewed interest. We certainly need an updated Parks Master Plan, Parks and Trails Master Plan, not just walking trails, but bicycle trails too. So, that's where I'm at on that topic.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your honest answers. I appreciate that. Our next question is about housing. And what specific actions should your city take to continue or ensure affordable housing is available? And Dean, sorry to do this, but you're up first on this one.
Okay. Well, it's a problem. Affordable housing is a problem in Olathe and throughout Johnson County. And in reality, Olathe city government really doesn't do much to encourage new affordable housing. And when we say affordable housing, I typically use the term accessible and attainable. So, the understanding is we're looking for housing, both single-family housing and apartments, at price points that everybody that lives in Olathe can find a good place to live. So, it's accessible, it's attainable for them. You know, we're in a housing boom here in Olathe. We're issuing more building permits, even with COVID this year, than we have in past years. And so, we're building new houses, we're building new apartment complexes, but they all tend to be on the higher-priced side. Houses, you know, they start at $400,000 and go up real quick. Apartments, your market rate mean that to be $1,500 a month for a single-bedroom apartment. So, we've got people in Olathe that have a hard time living here. If you're a single teacher and you work for the Olathe school system, you have a hard time finding a place to live, and that's just not right. City council can do more to encourage the development of affordable housing and there are a variety of ways that we can do that. Certainly, we can loosen some of the coding so that we can have smaller lots. When you lower lot prices and you densify the single-family housing a bit, that does allow for more housing, more affordable housing. We can waive some fees. You know, the city charges fees for developers for building new houses. Some of those fees could be waived. There's an opportunity for public-private partnerships, and that's something that should be explored. I mean, all of those things we need to take on. And in all cases, when we talk about affordable housing, it is not low-income housing, it's not cheap housing, it's simply affordable. And it's designed in a way to be as good as anything else, it's just a little bit less expensive. I want a city council that's proactive in taking this topic on. It's something that's very important.
Thank you, Dean. I appreciate that answer. And Ben, would you like me to repeat the question?
Nope, nope. You know, I kind of fall in the lines as Dean does. I do feel that empowering reduced lot sizes for smaller housing, you know, is something that we should definitely put some focus on. As Dean mentioned, you know, a lot of the housing in Olathe, especially the new developments, they've increased some prices quite a bit, given, you know, people are spending more time at home with COVID. But it's kind of pushing out, you know, the up-and-coming families because it's too expensive. They're either going, you know, further south or further north to cheaper land and lots. So, I do agree with what Dean was saying, you know. Empowering reduced lot sizes is key. I think that partnership between private and local government for more build-out opportunities is a smart thing to do. I think that any opportunity to, I guess you can say, be more marketable to people that want to live the type of life that we have here in Olathe, you know, you need to make it a lot easier for them to be able to find homes. I mean, right now, I think even renting houses is extremely expensive here. So, yeah, I'm in line and in agreement with what Dean mentioned, what you said to empowering reduced lot sizes and, you know, provide more.
Thank you, Ben. And David, what about you? Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think that's a, I think this is one of the big issues that the city is going to have to take on. Of the three topics that I've kind of chosen, this is one of them or part of one of them anyway. When I talk to people that are getting out of either high school or college recently, there's a consistent answer to that question of, have you had a chance to look for a place to live? And almost to a person, what I'm being told by those that are looking is they can't find places to live here in that younger age group, and that's very concerning. So, it is a very big issue. Now, what steps are we going to take to affect the change? That's a hard one. But I do think the city council needs to kind of lead the way in identifying what type of development we will accept. And I think the city council probably needs to identify places in the city that can be, renovated is the wrong term, but areas that aren't, that are somewhat blighted, that need to be updated. I think how we deal with that is something that the city council does have influence on. And I think we have a lot of things we can do. I don't know that I've got eight steps that I can highlight right now, but I do think it's the kind of thing that the city council needs to have a lot of focus on, not just for people to find housing, but if the city is going to attract new people to come here, they've got to find someplace to live. So, it's a big topic. I don't think we're going to solve it here right now, but I'm all for jumping on it if given the opportunity.
Right. So, we have consensus on the need for affordable housing. And Dave and Dean, you are running for council member-at-large, and Ben, you're running for Ward Three. So, we know whichever one of you are elected to your position, you'll be a champion for the people looking for affordable, attainable housing. And that's good news for all of us. Thank you. Our next question is about ordinances. So, in the role of legislative body, council members pass ordinances that have a direct impact on the Olathe community. How will you discern what ordinances are good for Olathe? And David, I would give that to you first. And if you need a second to process, go right ahead.
I'm going to ask you, go through that question again. I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
Okay. So, in the role of legislative body, city council members pass ordinances that have a direct impact on the Olathe community. So, how will you discern what ordinances are good for Olathe?
Well, I think any ordinance that we are going to pass that we don't have has to be, for some reason, some problem, some issue, something that is needing to be addressed. So, the process, I would hope, would start with getting as many of the affected people to share what it is that is at the heart of the problem that is requiring some new ordinance or some amended ordinance to be passed. So, reaching out and getting as much input as possible to ensure that we would have all of the information necessary to actually make a decision and even decide if an ordinance is necessary. I don't know that we want to pass ordinances just for the sake of passing them. There has to be a very solid, sound reason for legislating a change. So, I would like to believe that we would find a way to get as much input from those that are affected by it first and coming up with a consensus in the council of, okay, here's the issue, here are the options that we have in front of us, and together, we're going to come up with an ordinance that makes sense to address that, whatever that issue, problem, change must be. So, I think it's in the process of getting necessary input and the necessary options on the table before we make a decision.
Good. Good answer. Thank you, David. And Dean, I'll pass that over to you.
Sure. So, when we say ordinances, you know, at the federal level, at the state level, we call them laws. At the local level, we call them ordinances because it's a, you know, it's a milder term. But it's the same thing. An ordinance passed by city council is a law. It's enforceable as a law. You know, the city has an established set of ordinance that makes sense. So, for example, we have a UDO, Uniform Development Ordinance, that covers construction standards for new development. It covers building materials, it covers zoning and how we build a city over time. Very key ordinance, a very big, comprehensive ordinance. It's about the size of a Sears catalog, for those of you that remember a Sears catalog. But then, we have an ordinance that has to do with noise. We have an ordinance that has to do with how many pets you can have in your home. And so, the ordinance cover, you know, the spectrum of life in Olathe at any given time. And the city council pretty well has an ordinance for everything that is germane at this point. Generally, the issue is not passing a new ordinance, but rather updating, revising the existing ordinance and occasionally make a determination that maybe an ordinance has no longer, has lost its value. So, you know, it's an ongoing process of city government to review ordinances periodically throughout the different departments in City Hall and take a look at those and revise them. Certainly, the UDO currently, that Uniform Development Ordinance, the big ordinance that covers building, that's due for updates. And we tend to update that piecemeal, which is okay, so, you know, chapter by chapter over time. Like David said, you know, what we don't want to do is over-legislate. We don't want to be, you know, capricious and just wave our hands and say we're going to have a new ordinance. They have to have a purpose. They have to be something that the residents of Olathe understand. It needs to be value-added for the city. So, that's my thoughts on ordinances.
Thank you. And Ben, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. So, my understanding is, as both David and Dean mentioned, is that ordinances are generally day-to-day laws that impact our lives in one way or the other. For me, I've always, you know, gone, when it comes to rules and expectations, you know, to do what's common sense, what truly brings value to our city. I'm not one to implement an ordinance that just doesn't, isn't justified, isn't necessary or complicates our lives more than what it should be. So, for me, when it comes to ordinances and our day-to-day laws, you know, obviously, it would be something that would be discussed and reviewed with our team, you know, with the other city council members. And if it makes sense to modify, to create, then I'm definitely open for that. But I'm not one to just create ordinance that's unnecessary or just try to impose power that's unnecessary.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think there was a discussion about an ordinance regarding chickens in Olathe. Yes, there was. And I don't know what the outcome of that was, but that's an example of making a decision as the governing body as to what's permitted and what isn't.
I think that-
Allow chickens, but we don't allow roosters.
And what did you start to say, Ben?
I was just going to start to say that I think that the reasoning behind that was given how we were stationed and required to spend more time at home, you know, and people trying to find a way to survive without having to leave their home or their yard. But yeah.
Thank you for the history of that.
Unusual times.
Yes, for sure. Well, we talked a little bit about this with the question about housing. So, now, we're going to focus on the rezoning process. And this comes up before the council, city council, quite a lot. How would you handle rezoning issues that come before the council to balance the needs of the residents and the needs and interest of business? So, did I ask that in a clear enough way? So, Ben, you would be first up for that one. We're talking about rezoning and balancing the needs of residents and business interests that don't always converge.
Right. I think, you know, I've sat in on a couple of city council sessions, and this was one of the topics that came up, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago. I believe it's 175th Street and Monticello area. There's a proposal for some new development out there. And one of the concerns that was brought up was the fact that some of the residential, some of the homes out there were being swallowed up by warehouse build-outs. And one of the things that I learned in that whole discussion was that there are certain areas that are zoned to bring in, you know, commercial, you know, to bring in new companies, new buildings, new homes. And one point that was made in that discussion was, you know, will it affect quality of life for the residents in that area? So, zoning and rezoning is definitely an important topic, and it kind of helps maintain and control such things as traffic, you know, noise, pollution, just a number of various topics. And I feel that being a responsible citizen, I would want to do what's best for the residents in that area, but also zone or rezone responsibly to be able to generate more business and job opportunities in areas that are developing and growing.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that answer. And David, would you like to take a crack at it?
Sure. I think this is one of those topics that's hard to get to a final answer because there's so many variables. You know, zoning effects, I think, like Ben was talking about, values of current property values, future property values of those that are there. And certainly, if somebody's coming in that hasn't been there, whether it's a resident or a business, what their property values will be down the road. I think when there are an existing area that is zoned a certain way, to change that to something else, that, to me, is the heart of this question. If there's open areas that need to be zoned because the city's growing somewhere that doesn't have a lot of activity there, that issue's a much different issue than when there's an area populated residence and a business is trying to get an area to be zoned that allows them to build or to grow or to expand. And I think I'm going to be a little bit consistent with what I found in Ben's answer, right? I think we have to err on the side of the residents where there's a real conflict, especially if the residents have a history. If there's the opposite, if there's a business area that has a history and we're trying to find development for residential, well, that's a different equation, and I think we have more options there. But I do think the city council has a strong responsibility to be conscious of what we're doing to residents that might get their lifestyle and property values affected significantly.
Thank you, and thank you for shedding light that it really is a very complicated and nuanced issue. Thank you. So, Dean, it's your turn.
So, Olathe has over 145,000 residents today, and the city is 65 square miles. It is a big town, and as many homes, as much built infrastructure as we have in Olathe, there's a lot of open space. And so, zoning really is how we shape the continued development of Olathe as we build it out. So, the city has what's called a comp plan, a comprehensive development plan. So, that is the master plan of how the city is currently zoned. And like that UDO that we talked about previously, the comp plan is another Sears catalog. But if you were to look at a map of Olathe, so, you look at all of the existing residential places, the commercial, you look at the trafficways, you look at the industrial, you know, the comp plan is zoned appropriately for those existing locations. The comp plan then designates areas for, like, employment centers. That tends to be industrial. That's in deep south Olathe. We've got areas that are Office Park. We've got downtown Olathe, which is its own special zone, original town as it's called. And so, the developers that want to build in Olathe, and we certainly want built structures in Olathe, they come forward with proposals, and those are reviewed by planning staff. Those are reviewed by the planning commission, and eventually, that goes to city council. And it's attempt to review the logic of the proposed development against the city's comp plan. Does it make sense? Are they asking to do something in an area that's zoned appropriately? And if not, is it in any way appropriate to consider a rezoning? And occasionally, it is, but not always. That's pretty much the story on zoning. It's a hot-button topic always, and it requires team effort.
Thank you. I feel like I know more about zoning and rezoning in Olathe than I knew five minutes ago. So, thank you all for that. Our next question talks about management experience. And please tell us about your experience with managing a large budget. And Dean, it comes back to you already unless you need to catch your breath.
No, that's okay. So, you know, look, I use leadership and management in the same breath. They're different, but they're very much interrelated. You know, I'm fortunate. I'm a 30-year military veteran, and the majority of my time on active duty was spent in logistics and financial management. And as a matter of routine, I was responsible for very large budgets. My last assignment, well, my last assignment in Washington, I was the chief of staff for the Chief Operating Officer of the Defense Logistics Agency, $35 billion budget. So, in the military, as a financial manager, as a comptroller, as a logistician, I managed big budgets as a matter of routine. Since I retired from the Army in 2006, I've been in corporate America, five years with an engineering company, running a local office as a vice president. Again, multimillion-dollar responsibilities. And then, eight years in higher education administration, most recently at Case State Olathe as the Chief Operating Officer for the Case Olathe Campus. Again, big-budget financial responsibilities. I'm comfortable when it comes to talking big numbers. I've been enmeshed in that for a long time. I'm not an accountant. I don't want to be an accountant. I like to have accountants work for me. But I understand the purpose of comptrollership and how you manage budgets, uh, you know, the budget is a plan set to numbers and how we manage the budget for the good of the organization. So I'm, I'm comfortable with my level of expertise in both management and leadership.
Thank you. Ben, how would you answer that question?
You know, when it comes to budgeting and it comes to, um, managing a large budget, uh, I'll be very candid in telling you that I've, I've worked in various types of environments and different roles, um, that had given me the opportunity to, to manage some budget to some extent and certain levels. Um, I own my own business. I've owned my own business for over seventeen years. Um, you know, I have the, the longest-running and most established promotion companies for, for, uh, amateur and pro boxing, kickboxing, mixed martial arts. So, so, uh, I've been involved in, in small-scale productions where we've, you know, done a lot of local work. Um, I'm the sole owner of my company, the, the, the accountant, the plumber, the librarian, everything. Um, but I've also worked for some pretty large budget, uh, organizations such as Bellator and Showtime and HBO. So we've, we've had to manage and come within our budgets to make sure that our, that our events, you know, were successful. Generated revenue, um, and that we never exceeded the allocated budget that we had for our company for the events that we're hosting. Um, so I have some, you know, I'm not an accountant by any means, but I also feel that, you know, when it comes to managing budget, it's something that, um, you know, when it comes to city council, you work with the team, your team, and you work together to, to make sure that, that you're within budget, that you build revenue for your city, that you look for every detail to make sure that you're not, um, overlooking something that will cost you in the end. You know, at the end of the day, we all wanna be successful. We want our companies to be successful, and we want our cities to be suc- successful and, and fiscally responsible, so.
Thank you. David, your turn.
My turn. Um, this is my first, uh, attempt to be in public office. So my, my whole tenure is in the private sector. Um, I recently retired for Emerson Electric. And I ran their, uh, one of their engineering, uh, centers in North America. So, um, how to describe that? So the, the budgeting side of where on my, on, on the Emerson job that I had, uh, we ran projects that ran into the seventy to eighty million dollars apiece, um, as far as the project value. And the, the organization that I was responsible for, um, was a, was a, uh, about a thirty-five to forty million dollar generally budgeted, uh, group. Um, so as far as large numbers, small numbers, um, I'm comfortable. It's something I've done for most of my career on the, uh, as far as how to handle a budget. I think, I think budgeting is not a hard thing at all. I think budgeting is something that is, uh, either you do it well or you don't. Um, and it's generally a function of how well you communicate. Um, if expectations are clear, if things are laid out in a organized manner and then they're followed up on, on a regular basis, it is not hard to meet and stay within budget. And that's, that works at home and it works in business and it, and it should work in the public sector as well. My experience is when things don't go well, it's because one of those areas broke down. So that's, that's where the city council has a big part to play. Are we communicating clearly? Are we sharing expectations and goals with all those involved? Are we getting feedback regularly on how things are going? And are we making adjustments as they're necessary? And that, it really, budgeting is as simple as that in my experience.
Great. Um, it's very interesting to see how each of you have experienced management and budgeting in different rounds, you know, and, um, so thank you. That's really interesting and helpful to know about each of you. So our next co- question refers back to, we've talked about rezoning, we've talked about what do you do? How do you balance ordinances and the needs of your constituents with the needs of business interests? This question kinda wraps into that. How about public participation? Do you support a designated time for public comment at city council meetings? Why or why not? And David, you're up again.
I'm so, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm not sure I understood the question. Can you-
So do, do you support a designated time for public comments at city council meetings? Why or why not?
I, I definitely think that there needs to be dedicated time for public input at city council meetings. So I think the answer to that question is yes. And so why? I, I, we serve the city, the citizens of Olathe. We have to understand what they uh, are thinking and what their issues and concerns are and how the decisions of the city council affect them. Um, so I, I, to me, I don't, I don't, it's an easy answer. Yes, we need dedicated time for input at public meetings and city council meetings are public, so, yes.
Good, thank you. Ben, how about you?
Uh, I agree with David. Um, as a matter of fact, I do believe that we currently do that now, um, in our city council meetings. And I think it's important because you want to stay connected to your citizens, to your, um, residents. You wanna understand what their concerns are and you wanna provide transparency, uh, in, in providing, um, your residents' answers or at least some, some guidance as to the direction of our city. Um, so yeah, definitely, I agree that, uh, we definitely need time for our residents to speak at city councils.
Okay, thank you. And Dean, what about you?
I'd go on what David and Ben said. Certainly, we need transparent government. So the idea that we have, uh, public comment during city council meeting is very important. Now, here's the problem. Uh, in Olathe, when the formal, so the, the, uh, city council meetings are televised. But when the formal part of the meeting is over, the TV gets turned off, then we move to a period of public comment. So nobody sees what the public is saying unless you happen to be in council chambers. That's the problem. Needing to include the public comments so everybody can see. Now, part of the running discussion is, then you create a soapbox for anybody who wants to come and be broadcasting on TV what their particular issues are. You know, that's something we have to work our way through. But we really should have public comment that is public and accessible to the public who watch the council meetings live streamed on TV or watch the recordings after the fact. Then you truly have participatory government. I think that's extremely important. The more that we can do to make our budget, uh, I'm sorry, to make our council meetings transparent, the more that we can do to, to allow citizens to become engaged with the, the council and to be engaged with the local government in a public way, I think that's all good. Sometimes there's a educational opportunity involved there, but that's okay. It, it makes us a better city when we have a public comment and we're all, we're all able to hear what the issues are.
Good. Again, we have consensus among our candidates. Thank you. It's, you all are so polite and reasonable, uh, to one another. I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, our next question, we're gonna talk about the importance of voting. So participation in primary elections is dismally low, I think around nineteen percent. What are you as candidates doing to convince residents of the importance of good governance at a local level and encouraging them to vote in the primary? So the first one up for that would be Ben.
No, I'll, I'll start by saying that, you know, before I decided to, uh, participate in any, uh, attempt to run for office, uh, I really had the mindset that a lot of Americans have when it comes to politics. And that is, you know, hey, I'll just let other people take care of it, you know, let other people run and manage our country. Um, but what happens with that kind of ma- mindset is, is that a lot of real issues and opportunities fall through the cracks. So for me, I'm, um, I'm Puerto Rican, um, I'm Puerto Rican-American. Uh, was raised in a, in a military family for the majority of my youth and adult life. And I was able to experience a, a, uh, melting pot of various ethnicities, various religions, various, um, uh, backgrounds. So we, we, we all had a common goal, you know, and, and that common goal was, you know, freedom, love of America. So for me, the way I felt that I can contribute to my city is to reach out to minority groups that don't vote as much as they should. Um, you know, there's a, a, a growing, uh, Hispanic community in Olathe. Uh, there's a growing, uh, I'll say, uh, biracial, uh, uh, community and families growing in, in Olathe. You know, I'm surrounded by a great mix of people and, and a lot of them have, have had that mindset as I have had. And that is that, you know, we'll just let the other people take care of, of our government. And for me, I, I think more and more people are wanting to be involved. And we're gonna be out knocking on doors, meeting people, going to the various, you know, minority-owned businesses, you know, anybody that's interested and try to encourage them to vote because it truly impacts their lives and it helps address issues that may be falling through the cracks that don't normally get addressed because there's no voice for them.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. David, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I, I think I've, I think I've got it. Um, Janet, I, voting is a cornerstone of, of our society. And, uh, every, everybody needs to vote. Um, whenever there's an opportunity, we need to do that. Um, how, now, the question is, what am I gonna do to, to help facilitate that? Um, what I've done in the past is, is talk to everybody I know, and, and that's, that's the influence that I can have. It is, whether it's, uh, when I was at work, uh, whether it's my family, um, people in church, people I see that I live around, um, that's, that's where I talk about this. And it's, it's, there's always something to be done. There's always someone to talk to. There's always somebody that hasn't, um, looked at this topic as important before. So it's a non-stop responsibility. Um, I, I don't think it's just for candidates. I mean, we're in the, we're in the panel, so we're answering the question, but I think this is something that all citizens, um, have a responsibility to talk about and find out, you know, why, why aren't, why isn't somebody voting that I have an influence with? And, and what can I do to help address that question? Or what can I do to find the answer that would make, um, them feel better about whatever is causing that person to not want to? Um, but it, it's just a non-stop challenge, Jan. I, I, and I don't, I, I don't, I don't think there's any other way than to just talk about it and, and reach out to anybody and everybody that I can.
Thank you. If it's important to you, you talk about it, right?
Right.
Dean, would you answer that for us, please?
Absolutely. I, you know, I'd offer that, um, city council members are, are first citizens. They are intended to be thought leaders for the community. And so it's incumbent, incumbent on city council members to always be vocal about the importance of voting and participating in the democratic process, period. They should use every opportunity when they're in a public setting to focus on the importance of voting. And certainly, the city council should coordinate very closely with the public school district to ensure that the Olathe School District is teaching enough civics so that we are graduating our young citizens so they come out as responsible members of our democracy. Uh, as a candidate, like the other guys, I'm locking doors. And everybody that answers the door, I'm talking to them about the importance of voting, you know? And I'd like to think in some ways, maybe I'm inspiring people to vote. I don't know that that's necessarily the case. In some cases, I may be shaming people to vote. I don't know. But, but the whole point is, what we realize is, as important as national and state elections are, the majority of the decisions that are made that impact our lives are done at the local level. So we need an engaged local citizenry that embraces their role to vote. And we need to make it as simple as we can for them to be able to vote. I think that's key and essential to everything that we do, both as candidates and certainly as elected officials.
Thank you. I can tell you're all passionate about that topic, as are we, the sponsors of tonight's event. So thank you. We have a few questions coming in from, um, people participating tonight. One is about, um, diversity. Would you support an ordinance? We talked about, um, ordinance a while ago. Would you support an ordinance that would not allow discrimination against the LGBTQ in Olathe business, housing and education? Do I need to read that again? No. Okay, so first up on this, David, um, do you need a second to process that?
If I understand the question, I'm gonna repeat what I think the question is. The question is, do I support the uh, addition of new ordinances, laws that would, um, prohibit discrimination?
Yes.
Against, um, the LGBTQ community. Is that my, am I restating the question properly?
You are. You're even stating it better than the one I got. Thank you.
Um, I think there are a lot of ordinances slash laws, uh, that are on the books uh, that address discrimination. Um, and as a city council candidate, and if I were to be elected, I do not think I, 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 we should add additional ordinances, laws associated with this topic. I think we need to do a better job of dealing with issues with the laws and ordinances that we have to make sure they're consistently enforced and consistently and equally, um, administered. But as far as adding additional ordinances, I would say my answer is I'm not in support of that.
Okay. And Dean, I'll bring it to you, and Ben, you can wrap it up on this one.
Okay, so, so Olathe has, uh, an N D O, uh, uh, an LGBTQ, uh, nondiscrimination ordinance. It was passed, uh, about two years ago. It was a slugfest and it was an embarrassment. It was so difficult to get it passed, but it, it passed. I, I think it covers, Janet, what you say in your, um, in your question. I'm not sure about the education piece, but I think everything else is in there. You know, I would tell you, but from, you know, where I come from, uh, people are valued as people. And, you know, we come in all different shapes and sizes, all different colors, all different ethnicities, all different, uh, countries of origin. We have different, uh, sexuality, we have different gender orientation, but every one of us is a priceless piece of humanity. And we have to recognize that, that diversity in Olathe is the strength of Olathe. And we should embrace our fellow man and fellow woman as equals with dignity and respect, and we need to move on. So I support the N D O and I support modifying that if we need to, to ensure that we provide the necessary protections to this particular group of people. But we have a lot of people here that, um, are disadvantaged. And we need to work extremely hard to ensure that everybody has a fair shot and that no one is discriminated against for all of these nutty reasons that don't even make sense.
Okay. Um, and again, it's about supporting an ordinance that would not allow discrimination against LGBTQ in business, housing and education. So Ben, it's your turn.
Um, you know, I, I agree with Dean, uh, on this particular topic. I think that there, there should not be any opportunity for allowing discrimination of any sort, you know? Uh, I think that that, that's taking a step backwards in doing so. I think that we should support and acknowledge and respect all people of all ethnicities, colors, shapes, size, races. Um, so I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with, with Dean's view on this. I think that, that, uh, if there were ordinances or policies that needed to be adjusted to help protect the LGBTQ, uh, members or community, then it's a good thing. It's the right thing.
Thank you. Another question came in about benefit districts. And I'm not quite sure what that is, so we might have the person who has the question give us some information in chat. The question is, what is your stance on the use of residential benefit districts in the city of Olathe? Is there a scenario which you'd support their usage? Does anybody know anything about benefit districts?
You know, I, I can talk to it. And David and Ben can, can glom on at the end of, but the, uh, you know, and I'm on record as being, uh, opposed to residential benefit districts. Now, benefit districts, uh, th- there are a variety of different, uh, kinds of benefit districts and they're not all bad. Residential benefit districts can become problematic real quick, in my opinion. Uh, benefit districts are, uh, a method that the city uses to, to create new infrastructure. to, to create new infrastructure, uh, added roadways, added sewer lines, added water lines, et cetera. So we have a case, let's say we have a new residential, uh, development going in. And the developer is paying for the, the development of the land, which includes the road network specific to the, the home sites. But then the city wants some additional roadways built, the peripheral roads. They're not major arterials, but nonetheless they're important roads because the city is trying to keep up with the, the roadway requirements. So the city tells the developer, hey, you know, as part of the development arrangement, we need you to put in these additional roads. And the developer says, well, okay, but I can't afford to do that on my own. So they agree to create a benefit district. And what happens then is you draw a circle on the map and anybody who owns property within that circle would be assessed special property taxes on a first foot basis to cover their portion of being in that benefit district. And it becomes, you know, it becomes difficult for a couple of reasons. If you're someone who has bought a lot in their residential development and, and you may have been told that you're subject to a benefit district, but you didn't get much information. But you bought your house, you paid for the lot, you paid $500,000 or whatever for your home. And two or three or four years later, all of a sudden you're sucked into a benefit district and you have special tax assessments, bills that you didn't foresee coming. Well, that's problematic. Now, benefit district, it represents a cost share between people that own land, the developer, and ideally the city. And so if the city pays their fair share in the development district, maybe we have lower assessments and maybe that becomes more palatable. But, you know, the city never has enough money to go around. So it ends up getting stuck on homeowners and the developer, and that's where it becomes problematic. You know, the ideal situation is really that the developer simply charges more for the lots upfront. So that there are no hidden costs after the fact.
Got to stop it, Dean.
Benefit districts.
Thank you for instructing this. David and Ben, did you see, uh, the, in the chat, Michael Popper gave us some um, direction on what that was? And David, you recognize that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think the, the, especially in the residential benefit district side of things, this is, uh, this is something the, the city council needs to deal with, um, going forward. I, I think it's a communication issue. I think it's, uh, an issue where, um, if, if we're going to, if we're going to come up with a decision that is going to create an assessment um, to a variety of property owners, all those property owners have to be involved in that process. Um, what concerns me is having the major property owner, which is usually the developer and the city being the two main parties of conversation. Now, if, if this benefit district affects, and I think, um, Dean did a good job of explaining it, and especially this part about if we have new property owners coming into a development, that's one thing. They can be communicated to and they can decide what they're going to buy. What concerns me is people who are, property owners who already lived there. And that circle that Dean mentioned gets drawn around them and they're included into a benefit district that ends up with an assessment that they not only didn't know about, they didn't vote on it, they didn't decide about it, they didn't get a choice on how it was going to get done. And those are the kind of things that we, as the city council need to provide leadership on so that people aren't surprised. It's not right to surprise anybody with an assessment. That's happened to me. I know what that feels like.
Okay.
I didn't appreciate it. Um, now, part of it was my fault for maybe not learning about it faster. Um, but I didn't know I was supposed to. So, uh, we, we just, we, we have a responsibility as, as the city council and leadership and the city to deal with people not getting surprised. That's not right.
Thank you, David. Ben, you want to weigh in on this, please?
Sure. Um, you know, Dean, Dean and David are both on point with what they're saying. Uh, I, I will say that, uh, I'm, I'm the kind of person that I do not like being surprised with additional fees and charges. I don't think anybody is. Um, and, but I do understand the concept of share, sharing the responsibility. But I don't think that that responsibility should be, should be placed on people that already have established homes, have established businesses or whatnot in those particular benefit districts. I think that, that it should be an upfront discussion with new development, new residents, um, as a potential, you know, way to a, address that cost. Uh, I do not think that existing homeowners or existing businesses should be charged that, that benefit district tax or expense.
Thank you. Thank you all for that question. David, I'm sorry you had an unpleasant experience on this topic. Um, then a new question came in. As each of you have worked through your candidacy and have seen the candidacy, that's a hard word, the candidacy of others, what do you feel sets you apart as an added benefit for the city of Olathe? And does it, I'll just, who wants to go first on that question?
I can go first. I don't mind.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm the new guy in the block, I think. Um, I, I think the city has been run very well up to now. And I think the two people that I'm running against have done a very good job participating in that. So, um, from an experience, um, working with the city, they're better prepared than I am, and I admit that. Um, where I come to the table is I don't have any background. So I think I'm a little, maybe a little fresher, uh, maybe a little more open to things because I don't know any better. Um, uh, which can be good, can be bad. I don't know. We'll find out. But, um, I, 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 I really want to make sure that the, the people of Olathe understand the city's been run well. And it's, and it has grown responsibly. I think there's new challenges coming that we haven't dealt with before. And I think that's where my passions, my desires, my experience from where I've come from, um, my freshness, if you will, uh, perhaps will benefit the council because of that. Um, I, I'm, I'm anxious to get a chance to participate in what I think are the new challenges facing us. Um, I'm happy to be a citizen here in Olathe and I'm happy that the people that have been doing it have done a good job. So that's my answer.
Um, that's a refreshing answer to hear the gratitude and accolades for the people that are currently in, in office. Thank you. So I'm going to repeat the question. As you have worked through your candidacy and have seen how others campaign, what do you feel sets you apart as an added benefit for the city of Olathe? And Ben, I'll, I'll throw that to you now.
Sure. You know, I'm going to piggyback on a little bit of what David said. Um, you know, we're, we're both probably the, uh, the, the newbies in this, uh, in this campaign and we're both very new to the political process of, uh, running for a city council. So for me, I think that an advantage, um, of running for city council and representing, uh, Olathe Award III would be that, you know, I've, I've worked, you know, with, with multiple organizations, multiple groups of various backgrounds, ethnicities and whatnot. I'm bilingual. I speak Spanish. Um, you know, given the fact that I'm more of a centered person when it comes to our politics, um, I think that it's easy for me to reach on e- either side of the aisle and work with anybody, uh, to try to keep common ground and achieve goals that our city has in place or want to attain. I think that I can help attract business, um, you know, given that I have, uh, a pretty, you know, wide varied, uh, background and network. Uh, so I, I, I think that I can, you know, provide something that we haven't seen in Olathe in a long time. I think that I'm the first, uh, Hispanic in a long time to run for, you know, city council. And, um, you know, I'll be, I'll be helping out a certain group of people that maybe didn't have a voice before. And I can help bridge gaps where there may be some currently, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that thoughtful answer. Dean, your turn.
I think David and Ben are both the kind of guys that we need on city council, you know, quite frankly. Um, now here's, here's how I distinguish myself. Um, you know, I've got 45 years. I don't want to sound like I'm old, but I've got 45 years of leadership and management experience in successively higher sized organizations. I've been responsible before for organizations that had 3,500 people, uh, 35,000, I'm sorry, 3,500 people. I've been responsible for, for hundreds of millions of dollars of budget and City of Olathe's budget is $450 million in the next FY. I mean, this is a big business and I have the big business experience. You know, I currently chair the planning commission. I've chaired it for the past five years. So I've been in the middle of all this development activity here in Olathe and it's massive. I've also sat on the library board. Previously, about seven years ago, I was the president of the Olathe Citizens Association for Quality Streets. And we sponsored a ballot initiative that passed and that gives Olathe over 10 years, $90 million of added revenue to do street maintenance, which is very important. I sat on the Johnson County Housing Task Force for All. And for, for Olathe, I sat on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the, uh, the new strategic plan called Olathe 2040. You know, I have a master's degree in business. Two years ago, I chose to go back to graduate school to get an MPA, a master's in public administration. Because as I prepared myself to run for office, I wanted to make sure that I really understood a local government is supposed to work. So for the past two years, I've been a graduate student at KU. I completed the MPA in December. Um, I'm a graduate. I feel empowered between the MBA and the MPA to be very competent in, in matters that have to do with, uh, with city government. You know, I'm value added from day one. I'm, I'm not a trainee. I'm value added from day one to step in there and help the city make good decisions as we, we go forward. So that's how I distinguish myself.
Thank you. Good question. Good answer. So what, we have a question. Um, redistricting is something that the League of Women Voters is working on, uh, on a state level. So it's, you know, now that the census numbers are going to be released, the state legislature has a, an opportunity to, to redefine the districts, the legislative districts and congressional districts and school board districts. And a question came in, i- if you are on the city council, would you have any involvement with redistricting? What, and what, if so, what would be your priority for setting boundaries? And I hope I didn't butcher that question, Connie Taylor. Is anybody, um, going to take a stab at that? David, you look a little perplexed.
I, I, I'm not going to try to fool anybody. I'm not sure I know what role the city council has in that process.
Okay.
Um, certainly if there's questions that need to be answered and, um, issues that need to be addressed, I'm all for that. I, I'm, I'm just not familiar that, what the city council's input in that is.
Ben, or Dean, any, any thoughts?
I, I can jump in if it's okay with you, Ben. Um, I'd mention a couple of things. So re- redistricting is something that's triggered every 10 years in conjunction with a new census. And that happens at the federal and the state level. And, you know, it's monkey business. And the Supreme Court has not interfered. And so we do see redistricting occur based on political decisions to try and pack the, the, the districts so that it'll vote one way or the other. You know, that's tragic, but the city council really doesn't have any voice in that other than occasionally to be outspoken if they think something egregious is going on. Now, City of Olathe does redistrict within the city limits. And so we are on the front end of a conversation of whether or not the Olathe City Council should be restructured. You know, currently it's seven members, the mayor, two at large and four wards. There's some thought that maybe we should restructure the four wards to create six wards because the city continues to grow. So, you know, the, the size that a ward member has to represent is pretty big. There are arguments, pros and cons on whether or not that should happen. But in all of that conversation, there's never been any discussion about trying to jimmy the districts to, to somehow gerrymander them in favor of a party. No, it's just simple logic, drawing straight lines to carve up the city in a way that would allow for some additional districts, additional wards within the city. So that's, I mean, that's my thought there.
Thank you. Ben, you have anything to add to that?
Uh, you know, uh, as, as Dean mentioned, and as David mentioned, I, I don't know where the Olathe City Council would have much to do with respect to rezoning, um, for political purposes, right? Uh, I think that anything that, any rezoning that's done for political purposes is, is, is tragic and unnecessary and unjust. And I think that that should, should definitely be something that we aren't involved in. Um, when it comes to rezoning with respect to businesses, um, I think obviously that's something that we, that we are involved in and should stay focused in that capacity.
Okay. Good. Fair answers. Thank you all. Last question before we let you make closing comments, and this is regard to minority hiring. So what are your thoughts on attracting and retaining minorities, both in our community and as employees of the city of Olathe? That's an important question. Do I need to repeat it? Okay. Ben, you want to go first on that one?
Sure. You know, I think that, that Kansas City and Olathe specifically is a great place to recruit and attract technology, uh, specialists. I'll say IT, networking, cybersecurity, uh, along with others, right? And I, I, I can tell you that, you know, when my father was in military, we had the opportunity of, obviously traveling around the world. And, uh, I had a, an opportunity of going to school in Puerto Rico for a little bit, uh, before moving back to the US. And I met a tremendous amount of extremely educated Latinos, Puerto Ricans that could fill some pretty important roles in the United States, uh, and especially in the IT network, cybersecurity market. But they didn't have any way to get here or any career development steps or mentorship programs to lead them here. And, and I think that by establishing some possible mentoring programs, some possible internship opportunities, to bring in some of those, some of that talent, some minority talent. Uh, I think you, you'll see that it not only makes us better and competitive, but it helps grow our community in a positive direction. So, I don't know.
Oh, did you want to add something? I'm sorry.
No, I just think that, that, that's a very important factor of our growth and, and addressing the changing face of Olathe. Because Olathe is definitely growing in that respect. And I think attracting great talent, minority talent is, is, is the right step for our continued growth.
Thank you. David, want to answer that question?
I, I, I think this is one of those, uh, opportunities that we have to be, um, different, better going forward. Um, I think minority participation and, and as far as hiring, um, uh, and, and the city doing more is a function of both recruiting and, and what jobs we're trying to fill. Um, I think, I think too often we fill jobs because we've had them before. Or we had a vacancy because someone left and we, we refill it. Um, and that's good, I guess, but I don't know that that's the whole responsibility. I think we need to maybe do some redefinition of the type of things we want to hire. And maybe, maybe that would help us find different and, and, uh, different, but more people that haven't come looking before. Um, because we need to find them. We need diversity in, in all areas of the city because the city's diverse. Um, and whatever we're doing as far as bringing people to come to work at the city, whether it be contractors or whatever, um, we have a responsibility to, to, to look and search and find people that are going to represent the community that, that lives around us. So that's something the city can do. That's something the city has the ability to change. We can change what we want to hire. We can change how we want to hire. We can change how we go about getting the word out that we're hiring. Those are all things that we can do differently. Um, I hesitate to call it better. I think it's different, uh, to get a different outcome. I, I think we need to do things differently if we want something to be different and how the outcome shows itself. So we've got to be creative. We got to find new ways to do what we've always done. And that is what I think, I think we can do. I think we can do that.
Thank you, David. And Dean?
Well, I'd, I'd launch my comments by saying, you know, in my opinion, we have a great city staff. And everyone that works for the City of Olathe at all levels are top drawer, high quality people that are professional and have a customer focus. So we are very fortunate for everyone that's on the payroll working for Olathe. Uh, clearly diversity is important, you know? We have a diverse population. And to the extent that, that the diverse population looks at city staff, looks at public safety officers, you know, they like to see themselves. They like to see a reflection of themselves. So having diversity in city hall at, in, in all the different departments is important. You know, the city has a great HR department. You know, the city has a great HR department and, you know, we don't, we don't have quotas. We hire the best candidates. And it's incumbent upon us to make extra effort to find an adequate field of best candidates to ensure that we have the diversity that we want to be able to interview. So in some cases, you know, you have to look beyond who's on the payroll right now. You have to look in greater Kansas City or even have to look nationally to look for the different candidates out there. You know, our city manager, my opinion and my sense is he's probably gonna retire in a couple of years. Great guy, done a wonderful job. You know, when it comes time to hire the next city manager, city council is gonna have to recruit throughout the country to find the best possible candidate. And that's kind of true with every job we hire. We wanna make sure that we look for that diversity. It's not easy. Some of these jobs are tough to fill, but that commitment is very important. And I think it's also important, and I think we've got this awareness, that city staff appreciates how they are perceived by the general public. And they're very much in tune to the idea of being very considerate of all the different folks in Olathe from all the walks of life and being very sensitive to the feelings of other people. So that while we may not have, in some cases, the ideal perfect diversity, we nonetheless have great city staff who is focused on customer service and that's a good deal.
Thank you. Thoughtful answers. Thank you all. This is the time in the evening that we're asking you each to make a one-minute closing statement. And you're free to say why you think people should vote for you, why you wanna run. The words are your choice. So Ben, may I start with you?
Sure. Well, for me, I'll say first, I wanna thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak and to, you know, kind of share my perspective and my direction. I think that Dean and David are two great candidates that love the city. They love the life that they live here in Olathe. And I think that all three of us want to just help improve our communities. You know, I think that the opportunity that I have here to help improve Olathe Ward Three is that I'm a very inclusive, very open and transparent individual. I'm brand new to the political system. There is no, you know, there's nothing that's driving my desire to be part of the city council other than to serve my community, to serve my city. You know, if you look me up, if you, you know, do a little research on me, you'll see that the reputation that I have as an individual, as a father, as a person, as a professional is one of transparency, true commitment and loyalty.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Guys, thank you.
That minute went fast. Dean, I'm gonna come to you and then I'm gonna ask David to wrap it up for us.
Okay, good. Well, listen, many thanks to you, Janet, and to all of the forums co-hosts. Thank you. So I'm running for city council at large. I'm a 30-year military veteran and a retired army colonel. Since my retirement in 2006, my wife Julie and I put down roots here in Olathe. We feel fortunate to have become a part of this great community. Over the past 15 years, I've held executive positions in corporate business and higher education. I recently retired from K-State University where I served as the Olathe Campus Chief Operating Officer. I currently chair Olathe's Planning Commission and have served both Olathe and Johnson County on numerous boards and commissions over the past 15 years. I have master's degrees in both business and public administration. And I have the leadership and management skills to bring immediate value to the council. I'm running to be a servant leader to represent all of Olathe and all Olatheans. I want to make sure every voice is heard as we continue to make key decisions to help grow Olathe. And I'm committed to great local government, to a warm and welcoming environment for all, and to an ever brighter future for our entire city. So please ask that you all place your confidence in me and I ask for your votes.
Thank you, Dean. And David, you have the honor of being the last one to tell us.
Yeah. Well, first, Janet, like they all said, thank you for being the moderator. Thank you to the board for putting this together. It's been fun. I've enjoyed this opportunity. So thanks for doing that. I'm anxious and wanting and passionate to serve the city. My whole career was in the private sector. So I, when I finished that and I retired, I knew I needed to do something to give back. And this seems like the best opportunity I can to help the people that I live with. I think city council is an important role. I think it plays an important part in our everyday lives. And I wanna be a part of that to help the city continue to grow. It's a great city. People that have come before me have done a great job. I do think we have some new challenges. I think new ideas and more creativity is in store. And I wanna be that person to do that. So I'm asking for people to vote for Dave Long.
Thank you. Well, I take my hat off to each of you. This has been a totally enjoyable evening. I'm so impressed with your attitudes and your kindness and your, you know, just good people. So thank you. So candidates for Olathe Council Member at Large, David Lauder, Dean Vakis, and candidate for Olathe Council Member for Ward Three, Ben Nagiris. I thank you all three. It's been a pleasure. And I'm gonna turn this back to Michael.
And thank you very much, Janet, for moderating this evening, keeping the discussion going. And candidates, appreciate you taking the time to share your perspective and your positions with your constituents or your voters. And also I thank all the organizations who partnered to make this forum happen. League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce and Mainstream Coalition. Both the league and mainstream will be posting a recording of this forum on Facebook and YouTube. So please check it out and share them with your voting network. And also remember that advanced voting begins tomorrow by mail. And the last day to request a mail ballot for the August primary is July 27. So before you vote, please visit vot411.org and ksballet.org to read up on candidate positions, find your polling or drop-off location, and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining us and have a wonderful rest of the evening.